Yeah, October first, twenty twenty four's meeting of the County Department of Commerce officially will come to order. Uh, of course, if there's any present, uh, I guess we will wait for just a moment. I thought the specific mention of that. That he said she was kind of she's right there. Well, Mr. Hagan, can you hear us? Not yet.
Yep, I can. I just, yep.
These are the relations. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from prior meeting. Final motion, second. Commissioner Ross did move, Commissioner, uh, seconded, uh, during the discussion. All favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, both. That's unanimous. Next item, and it'll be approved for the order of agenda. Does anyone have any additions or movements on the agenda that they would like to make? Hearing none, motion. Second, second by Commissioner Ross, interrupted rather, and all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Then the consent agenda is item five, consists of the bills, employee status changes, and overtime. Any commissioner wish to have anything pull up on the screen? If not, they'll take a motion. So move, second by Ross, move approvals, and with the rested second, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Passed unanimously. Then item six is the, uh, a special event permit. Is there someone here from Eagle Crest Grill? So, Lieutenant and Administrator, do you have anything to say about it? It looks routine, I think. I have no comments.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I did speak to them, uh, no, they emailed me and I said you need to talk to the sheriff. If they do so, you know.
Uh, yes, they did, and we have no issues.
I'm going to go on. Right?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ross is second by Commissioner Page, all in favor of the approval of that special permit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Then we have, uh, Grand Sky Construction Company. You know who's here?
Um, I'm on the phone.
Brad, Brad is on.
Brad, are you on?
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Brad Gurkin with Grand Sky. Um, I am here to present, um, our latest construction bid information or bid results um, for the taxiway extension and utility extension at the north end of Grand Sky Boulevard. Um, we put out a package in, let's see, the middle of August for bids. Um, we received three bids on the twenty fourth last Tuesday. Um, RJ Zaveral and Sons were the, uh, low bid, um, for that project, um, in the amount of five million eight hundred twenty seven thousand dollars, one hundred and thirty one point eight five dollars. Um, additionally, I'm requesting two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of engineering construction support and owner's material testing and wetland remediation for that project for a total request of six million fifty two thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars and eighty five cents. There is adequate budget within the twenty twenty three state allocated funds and to accomplish the base bid and the alt item four, which is what added up, generated the eight point five million dollars of construction dollars. Um, we bid actually several alternatives to be able to, um, continue the construction if we get future state dollars and come and get approval from the commissioner, commission. But right now, we're asking to award the base bid plus alt four for this particular project. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for, for Brad? I'm going to go on. All right, the second motion, Mr. Ross did, and second by Commissioner Page. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Joe.
And Mr. Magnusson?
Chairman of the Commission, I have two items today. The first one is a rezoning request by Samantha Doll to rezone, uh, thirteen point six three acres from Airfield Preservation District to Airfield Reserve District in such two Chester Township. Uh, subject block currently has a home and several outbuildings aren't. It's located near the intersection of Seventeenth Avenue and Twenty Seventh Street North East. Airboat bases located one mile to the north of the site, uh, surrounding land use consists of government uses and agricultural lands as part of the land use plan. It's located within our air, you know, protection zone. Um, the rezoning request does conform to the goals and policies uh, of the land use due to the fact that it is not increasing the residential density in the area. Uh, we're dealing with an existing home for those under our zoning ordinance. Uh, again, that's in our Airfield Preservation Districts. Uh, it's currently residential zones are not permitted, uh, made abuse in this district. As far as the background, uh, the request for rezoning um, from the APD district to the ARD district, the, the differences that residential dwellings are considered legal non-conforming structures in the current zoning district, all they are considered committed uses in the proposed district. I believe, uh, legal non-conforming status for the structures does create significant obstacles in the event that something would happen to the house or if it was put up for sale. Uh, the Air Force Base commented that they have concerns regarding potential uses that are permitted in this proposed zoning district. Uh, for more detail, uh, as I say on staff report, I have attached to the basis both comments um, to staff report, uh, Chester Township recommended approval of their, of their request with no comments. As far as staff comments, uh, current zoning was adopted in two thousand and six. At that time, uh, the residential structure on the lot was considered a legal conforming structure. Rezoning the property to ARD would reinstate that status while also meaning attend to the ordinance since residential density is not being increased. Uh, as I mentioned before, the Air Force Base uh, did have concerns. Uh, they primarily had to do with potential in, in-home daycare facilities and residential care facilities serving six or fewer. Uh, to address those, the, as far as the in-home daycare facility, they are licensed by the State Health, uh, Department. They do require a zoning letter, uh, approved by the county planner, and this is system one would not be issued due to the close proximity to the base. Uh, as far as the residential care facilities of six or fewer, they are required in all zoning districts, no matter what, uh, and, you know, they are required to be of, by state law to, uh, avoid the housing discrimination against the elderly and people with developmental disabilities. Um, however, primarily, they only exist within the city. They locate them close to where the business offices that are providing the service are, are located. Uh, so I, 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 I guess my opinion would be that, that it wouldn't be an issue, you know, it's kind of a moot point also. Um, as far as the other concerns, our zoning ordinance does not allow more than one dwelling per parcel, and we do not allow multifamily dwellings, uh, anywhere in the county. So, uh, residential density would not be increasing if we did approve, uh, the rezoning request. The other uses, uh, the base was concerned are considered special uses, then they also require a public hearing with base input and county commission approval. So it's, nothing would be able to just appear um, without permits or anything like that. Uh, the county commission did recommend approval of the request through September seventeenth meeting. However, they did not have the Air Force Base comments at that time. I know, uh, there are representatives from the Air Force Base here today, so I guess I would, if they want to make comment, I guess I would be, sign if that's all right.
Welcome, and would you state your name and your position with the Air Force Base? Uh, yes, my name is Kyle Slidmick. I'm the base committee planner. Um, I have a few documents to share with you if that's okay. Yes. Can the homeowners get a set of the documents as well? Thank you.
Uh, coffee for the, um, we have.
I'm sorry, I only brought ten. I didn't realize there was gonna be so many.
We can, this is just.
You can, you can give them mine. We can share. Do you need more than one?
So in the, in the packet that I had just given you, um, it's a letter from our, uh, installation commander, Timothy Monroe. Um, if you'd like, I will read that, um, otherwise, um, that's great information.
Certainly, it'll be part of, part of the record, but you can refer to whatever paragraphs you want or read the whole thing. It's just you.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and read it. Um, here, Mr. Magnusson, this letter addresses the proposed rezoning of two private properties south of Grand Forks Air Force Base in APZ one and two. Both properties are currently zoned by, uh, Grand Forks County has Airfield Preservation District. I am concerned that the rezoning of these properties as Airfield Reserve District risks safety to the community. It is the policy of the United States Air Force to engage with its community partners to foster compatible land use and to help local governments and communities better understand the nature of military operations and procedures coming around the Air Force installations. The United States Air Force does not desire to recommend land use regulations which render properties economically useless, but it is cognizant of protected people in areas adjacent to the base. APCs are a planning tool for local agencies to identify areas, not probabilities, where aircraft mishaps are likely to occur. The Wilkinson property is located in APZ one. For Grand Forks Air Force Base, our studies are recommended against residential or household units in the zone. Due to the nature of military aviation operations, there's an increased risk of accidents within an APZ which justify the creation of a perpetual easement over the property. This perpetual event dated nineteen sixty five granted the United States of America the right of way for free and unobstructed flight of any type of aircraft through the airspace ninety five feet above the ground and grant the ability to prohibit, to prohibit use of land over the same. The Doll property is located within APZ two. While concerns of rezoning are somewhat lessened as compared to the Wilkinson, Wilkinson property due to its increased distance from the airfield, United States Air Force studies recommend only single household units, but not multiple units, apartments, group quarters, or transient lodgings. Rezoning the property presents similar concerns. It's the Wilkinson property and then increased residential properties in that area, which could include residential care facilities and daycare facilities, increased population density, and a higher noise and accident risk area. While the Grand Forks Air Force Base is committed to the highest standard of operational excellence, the inherent risks associated with military aviation operations are as compelling today as they were in nineteen sixty five. And therefore recommend disapproving the proposed rezoning of the prior properties currently located in APZ one and two. This, this development would present increased safety concerns due to the potential for increased residential use and persons in the areas. Grand Forks Air Force Base remains dedicated to maintaining positive and effective relationship with community partners for the benefits of Grand Forks County and North Dakota. I thank you for your, for the opportunity to provide input regarding this project. Should you have any question or would like to discuss this issue further, we used to agree to contact me, Kyle Slidmick, um, Grand Forks Air Force Base.
Um, questions for Mr. Magnusson?
Okay, I'm familiar with one of the properties, not both of them, but neither one of them could turn around and sell their their family farm for, I mean, to sell it if they want to retire, they want to be okay.
So as currently zoned, um, as Mr. Magnusson had stated, um, they're non, um, it's non-conforming structures, um, so I believe that they would have issues with getting a buyer to purchase that home. Uh, there are a clarification for that. Um, I guess I'm not super familiar with, uh, some of those rules and regulations, but uh, as it currently is, they are not the form of structures.
So since they own this property, and I can't say if it was before nineteen sixty, whatever or not, is there any way that our Defense Department can reimburse these families for their property because they're walking away and have no way to resell them for a single-family home?
So there are, um, repi, there, we have a repi program, um, that has been used to purchase properties within the clear zones. Um, they prioritize properties in clear zones, um, less so in APZ ones, um, but it has been done before, um, if the Air Force needs it necessary and there is a dwelling.
Well, and I just think that because individuals purchased these properties whenever they did, um, they can't walk away with nothing, no, no funding to, you know, support moving on, going to a different location, whatever. So hopefully, these two families could meet with the military, yourself and any other individuals to try to work out some deal so that they may have to relocate, but at least they've got some, some valuation from their property to be able to do that. Is that a possibility?
It is a possibility. I, I could not commit the, the Air Force to that. However, um, we would be open to conversations with them. However, I cannot commit the government.
Well, and you know, for your families that are concerned, um, at times you're fighting federal with federal, and I would strongly suggest, and you have already done that once, um, contact our congressman. Their federal representatives of us, uh, residents in the state of North Dakota, and they should hopefully help you try to figure out a solution.
Sir, from the audience.
Chairperson, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Zachary Tomcik. I work with Rosenquist Law Office. I represent the Doll family. Um, I have a question, and we have contacted our local representatives, and they kind of hit the same hurdles we have. We've been in this process for about two years now. Um, and so this is where we finally got moving. I was with the county commission. Um, so it'd be unfortunate if we had to go back to the representatives. Uh, but I see on this letter written from Colonel, uh, Timothy Monroe, um, that the Doll property is located in APZ two, and according to the chart, uh, figure four land use compatibility, it looks like you guys do allow single units. Um, so I'm confused on why their property wouldn't be allowed to be, uh, brought into that different rezoning because it does look like it is allowed by the Air Force Base.
So I, I believe the reason that we are not recommending approval of the rezoning is because of all of the additional permitted uses, um, daycare facilities, um, group housing, things like that. That was another, so.
Some of the permitting processes. So to me, that's moot.
Right, because they still have to come to us to get the permits to get the facility up and running, and you wouldn't allow them to do that, right?
I would agree. That would be speculation. Currently, I, do you have any insight on that? Um, the law is not my, my specialty.
We have a, I don't know, do you have any?
The question regarding like the licensing of the daycare.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure if you said you're not proficient in law, which I, I think there are questions that we can.
If it does go to the, uh, Airfield Reserve District, as that's written, it doesn't live up to a single family resident, at least in the, in the, in the closest to one. Is there a way that an amendment can be made to the zoning laws to permit a single-family house without any extras like would normally be allowed on either of these two parcels?
Well, I guess that's what I was kind of telling you in the staff report. Is anything more than a single-family dwelling, uh, that would increase residential density has to come to us for approval. It would just not be simply allowed or to be able to pop up, um, whether it's a daycare, uh, that requires a zoning letter from myself, which would not be issued, and the residential care facility serving six or fewer, our hands are tied to that, and we have to allow, no matter what, it's a law. But, uh, chances of it happening are not. Anything else would require county commission approval.
Those are the two examples used for both zoning types. I'm not even comfortable splitting up the two properties into one being a safer, one being a, uh, less safe zoning. I don't, this to me doesn't make any sense. I don't think anyone's talking about opening up a daycare. I think what they're talking about is selling a property to somebody else that's gonna move there and it's existed there for eighteen years. And there hasn't been planes crashing on the property, and obviously they're aware of the noise. So to me, this, that, this surprises me that this letter came in this nature, but it, um, I don't, I don't agree with the findings. I just don't comprehend. It doesn't pass the smell test.
Might say something. The highway makes a lot more noise than the airbase does.
I don't think it's a noise. So I, I'd like to, any other questions before I, I just, I've got a comment I'd like to make. I don't think we can allow a change to the air reserve district unless there's a change that says it can't be done the way the normal ARD is done. Because that, it means someone could come to the next planning and zoning person when you hit the lottery and retire, and that person would like to say, you know, you, you wouldn't allow that. Doesn't mean the next person wouldn't, and would the Air Force have a right to object to that at that time? I, I don't know what the rules are on it, but I, I I, I when I, when I look at, uh, Colonel Monroe's letter, and I know you're a very thoughtful commander, um, that they're obviously concerned with more traffic right in lines, especially right in line with the runway. I think one of these is. So I'm not sure we have enough information to determine it today, whether we can find a way to make this work.
Mr. Magnusson? Well, that's something we looked at, and the issue is, is in the proposed zoning district. There, it's a very large area that is on the outside of the base. This restrictive zoning district, which is currently is only covers a couple square miles, that's very restrictive, and we have two existing homes in that district. If we allow them as, uh, permitted uses in that restricted zoning district, then it opens up a can of worms where somebody can come in and say, well, I want a building permit here, here, and here in, in that area, which I don't think we want to do. Um, if we if we do the opposite, you know, I mean, if we make the proposed zoning district more restrictive, then you're gonna penalize people everybody within three or four miles of the base. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two in terms of, you know, like I said, it would still it would still require county approval for anything. Most of the stuff, all but one thing, the daycare would be a zoning letter, and that could even be um, required to be signed by the commission. So I mean, we could, we could bump that up to your guys' approval also. So a future planner decides that, oh, this is okay, then you guys would have your view of that too. So, I mean, that's an industry of the, of change pretty easily. But, uh, all, all the others just must require your guys' approval. That's something I can approve or can just have.
Sir, could you come to the podium?
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to, again, refresh the memory of what kind of, how this transpired. So the Doll property, for example, has been around since nineteen thirty-two.
Yep.
Um, and again, the base, uh, came after the fact then. Uh, and then about two thousand and six is when we had this rezoning, and, uh, neither of the parties were notified of the rezoning, and then they basically lost use of their property. So they're at this point where they need to figure out what they can do to, um, working up the doll, and it's staying with their father until he passed away. They are trying to purchase the property from the estate. It's currently in limbo, so it'd be the same family living there. And then the Wilkinson family, who I don't represent, but if I can speak for you, had been trying to sell this property for quite a bit of time to other single-use families. Uh, it appears that a lot of these issues are speculation, and that, um, at least for the Doll property, what we're asking for was allowed and is still allowed, but they don't want to change it back. So we're just asking for it to be rewarded, or for the county, if they won't do that, uh, to try to make amends and make this right, please, families. Thank you.
You, Mr. Ross. My question's for State's Attorney, Longstead. Is there not a way we could zone this properly, the way it once was, so that they can actually, well, these properties to, in one case, a new owner, and in other case, a family member with a memorandum of understanding or something of that nature, that states they won't have a multi-family unit or a daycare center? Because my hunch is, since those are the two examples used, those are the two ones that are the most noteworthy, that are problematic. Well, to me, I don't know if there's a big clamoring for people to run their daycare center out to the, the Air Force Base, or their kids out to the Air Force Base for the daycare. I don't think that's gonna be an issue. And I also don't think there's a lot of, of issues with people wanting to build multi人的 buildings out there. So to me, if those were the two used in this letter, then they're the two most noteworthy, and I think there's got to be some way we could make these people whole without, I mean, because right now they're up against it, and this to me, it just isn't right.
Mr. Ross, as members of the board, um, I'll try to answer your question, but Mr. Magnusson, feel free to chime in as well, because he knows this area better than anybody in the room probably, but, um, I, I think there's a number of ways you could go about it. Probably not an MOU might not be the, the best way. Um, I think you could rezone these properties if that was the board's decision, or you could amend the zoning ordinance to, uh, change those requirements of a specific zone type. Um, and that maybe would be the best way to address, if that's the end you're speaking, was your agreement, Mr. Magnusson?
Yeah, I mean, another thing that we could do with these two specific uses, instead of having them permitted, even though we basically have to admit that, um, we could change them to specialty, so the commission would have to give their direct approval for it. Um, that would take it out. The only concern I have with MOUs is if I'm, if I'm gone tomorrow, I mean, there's gotta be a way to keep track of that, and how are they gonna, how is somebody else in the future gonna know if those MOUs are in place? I mean, that's a piece of paper in place.
That was just an example, like, just a way to finagle this so that, I mean, because we're dealing with. I mean, because we're dealing with demonstrating what's right and what's wrong here. And I I do believe what is occurring for these folks is wrong. And so for a position to make it right, whether whatever we have to do, whether it's a memorandum, it doesn't make a difference to me, but uh some solution to make them whole because this isn't just, I don't think anybody in this room would think it is, including the Air Force Base members.
No, I I guess my, if if you wanted to take this further, I guess my recommendation would do the beat the actual ordinance amendment because then that's somewhere documented. And it's gonna be, you know, enforced uniformly and we're not gonna have to guess if we should be doing this or doing that.
Well, is that something that's that I I I don't think I could vote for today without having that change made. Is that something you can put together and then present to the Air Force to see if they the limited use would be acceptable? Because if you go with the reserved um use, you can't really control that. It works for the folks now and I'd like to help with a remedy for them. But also I have to keep the that that Air Force Base is gonna have a lot of activity in the next coming years and it's uh we have we think there are B ones coming in for ten months and we don't know what the missions are after that. But the base is alre- always ready to bring in other things like tankers or whatever when there are hurricanes in Florida or whatever. So it's not just a little bunch of smaller drones that are flying around and um having been a member of the Air Force, in fact, a legal office. I I pay a lot of attention when the wing commander says this is an issue for us. So I think if we're gonna have a resolution, the Air Force needs to participate in that resolution. And maybe there is a narrow way we can do it. What how what do you think that would be?
Well, there's one or two ways you can go about it. One way is uh you could make a decision on the rezoning today and put a condition on that rezoning approval saying we need to, it's, you know, whatever, on the condition that we move residential care facilities and daycares into the special abuse category in that zoning district. The other one is we could go through the ordinance amendment um which we we have unfortunately missed the October deadline for advertising uh or will soon. So I mean, it would be, the only bad part is it would take maybe a a couple extra months depending on, you know, what transpires. So I mean, we could do it either way, where we could do the ordinance amendment and then come back come back to the rezoning, otherwise you could put a condition on the rezoning today that that's your guys' choice.
I think it's incumbent on us as well to make sure that any change that we've made to this ordinance also complies with financial institutions so that people could take a loan out or purchase the property, whether it be from the Dolls or you you know, either one. I think that beyond just the Air Force, I think also at least a bank representative should be involved in that conversation as well, because if we change it, they still can't sell the property. We haven't actually done anything.
But I also think that the maybe it could be put together for the next meeting, but I do think the Air Force should be prized of what the final approach looks like it will be, because it looks like it's a little too broad the way it sits as a the air reserve air reserve or airfield reservation district, looks like it's written too broadly. But if you can narrow it, maybe that'll be acceptable to the Air Force. Worth doing, I think. I know we've been going a long time with this, but maybe by the next meeting, if it figures it all, then you can take care of it.
I know.
Do you have a question? Yes, go ahead. State your name, please.
Robert Wilkinson. Our property has been there since nineteen thirty, well, it predates the airbase um. Lots of my train of thought. What I um the the county is the condemning authority. The county is the deciding authority. You are the authority. The Air Force has merely, they have an opinion, no different than mine. But what I see right here in the handout you got is a big stick by the Air Force and it's obviously working. It's just saying, this is how much money we put into the community. They don't make us angry. But I I would submit that the Air Force isn't going anywhere. This base isn't going anywhere. And whether you rezone our property or not, um the money's gonna still be there. The Air Force is gonna still be there. Thank you.
We we did receive that today and I don't think it influenced anybody in review of the documents for the for the hearing, so they still haven't looked at it. Yeah, but I I agree with you on that. So uh and have any further questions to Mr. Magnuson?
I guess one more comment just for the consideration. We have been also in contact with the Air Force Base Legal Department multiple times over the past year and a half. And the first time there's any got, we got good feedback, good conversation was today. Um and when they appeared before you guys. And so it's it's a little frustrating, obviously, for the families that this keeps going round and round and round and that appears to be kind of uh kind of where this could be going again. And so I just wanna let you know, we have reached out to Congressman, we have reached out to the Air Force Base, we've been in communication with zoning, um we've done everything correctly. Thank you.
And I I agree with that, but we still have to make our decision based on how the zoning would be would affect the mission of the Air Force Base, so. But anybody, are you on?
Okay, and we, okay, if we do an ordinance change, can that, does that need to go before planning and zoning first?
Yes, that's what I was gonna get to. I there's that I do to the eight century code requirements for advertising for a public hearing, I I would not be able to get anything legally done before the next meeting. I have to, I have to, uh it would probably be three, four weeks at at minimum, so we we'd be looking at the, what would it be, the first meeting in November? Maybe if I had a special planning commission meeting, because I've already missed the deadline for for this month. So uh so yeah, I mean, it would it would take time, but it's still.
Yeah. Well, I I I think if if that's what we need to do to get the ordinance changed, then I think we need to look at it at planning and zoning to follow the right procedures.
Right, yeah, no, we would definitely have to plan and zone before the the ornament amendment would, so.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, I don't know, we have a quorum between the three of us right now. Well, you and I are on the distance. There I call the special planning and zoning meeting.
No, I wish it were that easy. I have I have to advertise three weeks prior, second week, so.
Just me, it seems arbitrary because people are being affected negatively, you know, every single day that goes by, you know. Also, most are having a snow after already have sold out this equipment. It just isn't fair what's out.
Well, are there a consensus to have Mr. Magnuson bring this to planning and zoning or is there a motion?
Yeah, we'll make a motion for them to bring the planning and zoning. Bring back to the commission.
Most of them made to have a special planning and zoning meeting and bring it back to the commission as soon as possible. Is there a second? Any further discussion or questions? All favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Then for procedural reasons, the the second rezoning request is basically is exactly the same thing, just different acreages. Um I guess I would uh ask for a motion to do the same for that, just so that we have it on the record.
Oh, we're coming to the motion again, you think?
All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. That's fact as well.
Thank you.
Sorry, we keep dragging.
First question, and maybe the Air Force men's is you said there may be a a procedure to buy the people out if they would like how would they go about that if that's what they would like to do? Any idea?
Um, sir, we will, we can get you that information. Um it's a program that I'm not familiar with. We haven't done a a rapid purchase on that Grand Force Air Force Base. It's been a very long time ever, um but we will look at it.
Up against us, we're close to where we're laying. All right. I mean, right now, the property's worth about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's going up from there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item.
Captain Fishers, um here to present a couple different items for Chair Signature in the Federation. Uh first is the FY twenty-four uh J Grant Interlocal Agreement. Being us in the Grand Force Police Department, um J funds, we've been doing this for years. This is basically a copy and paste from last year, other than the federal funds were increased slightly. So considering a packet, Miss Wong said had an opportunity to look it over. She has no objection. And uh so I'm just asking for Chair Signature. I'll take any questions.
Yeah, I would make that motion with Chair Signature in a second.
Mr. Ross motion. Uh any questions before we take a vote? And on the whole favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
And the second thing I note is our Mission Zero Outreach Coordinators budget um through the grant, um all the expenses. Again, it's a copy and paste from last year. Uh their budget run up, everything's covered by um the D O T. So just ask them for Chair Signature and I'll stand for the budgets. Yes, sir.
No, I'm just making a motion to sign it, sorry.
Mr. Peach, in a second. Over that motion, signify by saying aye.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um talking as long as that we're not ready for the C V I C lease yet, so that'll probably be the next commission meeting. We can if we can table that one. Uh two weeks ago, I mentioned a cobbit more controlled access would be coming back to the commission. Um so that that's what we have now as a core from basic construction for twenty thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars extends. Um just just to remind the commission, this was a recommendation in a Department of Homeland Security Vulnerability and Security Assessment in twenty twenty-two um that if we were going to be leasing out portions of of the north fifth floor area, we should do this. Um we ordered the doors, we have them on hand. However, we've put staff put it on hold until we figured out what we were gonna do with fifth floor north. Uh now that's figured out, that's being leased out to one half C V I C, the other half emergency management and and human resources. So staff is asking that we complete the project. Um so would be asking for approval of the bid and twenty thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty cents on a capital improvement. It was approved in in April twenty twenty-three, but obviously this is a different budget, so.
Questions in the reports? I'm going to approve on. Mr. Rust, approval, second, second by Mr. Ross. All favor the motion, signify by saying aye. Both. That's gonna, that's all I have. State's Attorney Longstead, anything today? Committee reports. Start with Commissioner Peach.
Um the Air Force Authority, we're meeting at last week. Um they're finishing up some construction projects on one of the runways and looking at uh finally having an open house for the customs, the new customs. Other than that, things are busy with lots of U N D students taking off and landing and things are going well.
Mr. Hagan.
Uh the library board have a red discussion going forward how we're going to review books and make it more of a streamlined process. The last two um subcommittees that got together didn't have the same I was gonna say same um parameters on how they were judging these books, so we're trying to make it a little more streamlined, so getting everyone to agree on that. Take some time, but we need to have something because it's we just keep getting more books that people are requesting, so which is fair, but there's not really anything in place right now, so we're kinda feeling. Oh, and then we had the but you just started talking about it because I'm apparently not.
Well, the airport intersect, we were presented with six options uh to rank in order for the for the intersection going forward. Um a sensible motivation with the Department of Transportation on their part to uh make some changes. Uh really good for everybody. I there was another accident there that Mr. Ford made me aware of last week, which ironically, we can't even make this up, was the person that was there to comfort the mother of the young child that was most recently killed there. So uh yeah, it's just, it's time. So D O T's more invaded, there are a lot of people there. I mean, I didn't count, but I mean, I bet you.
It was a forum.
Probably forty cent people or something like that.
A lot of stakeholders.
Three of us were there.
Lot of good input and in conversation. It wasn't just a presentation. And then this is what we're gonna do. There was a lot of back and forth and questions and answers, so I think it was productive.
I was gonna say, I'm not super reported, but that.
Okay, I I too was uh at that Highway Two at Cairo Five meeting. Um and uh it was very informative. The other thing is the uh instruction at the jail is moving right along. Uh we're down to about every other week now to have meetings. Um and sounds like Mr. West is gonna add some gravel on the south side of the existing jail on Friday. Oh, let's see, what else was? Oh, we've uh we had our meeting today with the sheriffs. Where we're gonna put the sheriff's office. Uh one of the contractors met with Commissioner Hagan. Um uh Mr. Ford and uh uh the auditor was there and did a presentation on what he can do and it was very informative and uh but we have another one now on Thursday at two o'clock in the afternoon and another one on Monday at nine o'clock in the morning. So those are the three that we're we're dealing with at this time and um trying to get uh uh chief deputy Stromber's office, a little bigger than a janitorial closet, but it's anyway, that's the end of my report.
The folding chair.
I didn't have much between then and now, but uh just brick door morning and E D C on Thursday and two weeks of the of the uh month are always the craziest for some of those agencies, so that's a, I had a quiet week the last week. I think that's all we have for committee reports then. I mean, unfinished business with N D S U extension.
Mr. Chairman, the commission, we got that email, our email from the North Dakota County Commissioners Association asking that you review the policy for N D S A view extension and let them know if you have any concerns about November twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four. And I take care of Kenz and it's here as well. So if you have any other questions, talk then.
Informational or do we, you don't need to vote on this now?
You do not.
Any questions with Nelson? Any questions with Ms. Nelson? All right, any correspondence?
No, I guess not.
Well.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Pardon me?
Helen, we can get out.
Second. Second if you want the first. Thank you, everybody.
Dave.
Feed it stop. Thank you.
Yep.
You guys, I just.